He's looking at thirty, thirty year engagement. Evidently. Oh, so the clock's back flowing again. We'll see if it catches up. What's that? Oh, geez. Do you have cards? You have one? One?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, to the first meeting of 2022 of the St. Charles County Council. Tonight, we will begin with our invocation. Ray Hare is feeling worse tonight. Hope his pastor is feeling better. He is under the weather from the Amazing Grace Bash. Our pledge allegiance is from Councilman John White. From there, Ray, podium is yours, sir.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you and ask you for your wisdom, knowledge, and understanding this evening. And we give thanks for those who serve in the St. Charles government and for the people willing to participate from the city of St. Charles. Help these in charge of making important decisions to act with character and conviction. Help them to discern with understanding and goodwill. And please, dear Lord, help one and all here tonight to speak with charity and restraint. Keep them in the spirit of the service to God and community. Remind us all that we are stewards of your authority. Guide these in service to be the leaders for the people here in St. Charles. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence tonight and the joy of helping build a community worthy of your praise. We give you the praise, honor, and glory for all that goes on here tonight, and we thank you in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated, please call the roll.
Councilman Cronin?
Here.
Councilman Brazel?
Here.
Councilman Hammond?
Here.
Councilman Elam?
Here.
Councilman Hollander?
Here.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Here.
Councilman White?
Here.
First item up is the election of county council chair. But before I take that, I would just make a note that in between last meeting and this meeting, Bill 5030 was withdrawn and is not on tonight's agenda. So if you were here for that particular bill, it has been withdrawn and will not be considered and will not be on the April ballot. With that, I would entertain a motion. Thank you very much, please be seated. I'm just kidding. I know you're all excited, it's my last night to be council chair. So with that, I would entertain a motion for chair.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion and nominate Nancy Snyder as council chair.
I have a motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do I have any other nominations? With that, we would call the roll? No, just it. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Councilwoman Schneider, congratulations, you are our new chair.
Congratulations.
I will swap places with you.
You want to swap with Dave?
Thank you so much. This is like the three students trying to figure out who else we are here.
It means time's up.
Oh. Is my tenure over?
It was quick.
It was quick. Okay. So I think the next item on the agenda is election of a council vice chair. Are there any nominations for that position?
I would nominate Joe Cronin for vice chair.
I would second that.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any other nominations? Okay. So by acclamation, then Joe Cronin is our vice chair. You're in charge of all the vice, congratulations.
This is my third time of being vice, I should be good at it now.
Okay. So the next item is public comments. Before we do that, though, I would ask you to indulge me for just a second while I make a comment of my own. First of all, I'm very honored to be chosen the council chair. I do have a couple of goals, I guess, looking forward, people tend to make resolutions this time of year. So I've given it a little bit of thought, and I would just like to announce my my New Year's resolutions for this position. First of all, it would be to welcome all who attend the meetings, to observe, to comment on or participate in the process of our county government. Next, to listen to citizens' opinions and goals for the county, as well as to listen to the recommendations from county staff and elected officials. Next, to treat one another with respect and courtesy, and to refrain from threats and personal attacks. Those are my goals this year. I think we should all remember that we're all in this together, we're all working for the benefit of our county and for the citizens who live there. And so I would hope that you would all join me in those goals for this coming year. With that said, we will have public comment. As far as public comment is concerned, I believe we will take up to three speakers in favor of an issue and three opposed to an issue. There's a three-minute limit, there's the clock up there that will let you know when your time is up. When your time is up, I'll thank you for your comments and ask you to be seated. So we have public comment?
We do, Arnie Deenoff.
Okay, Mr. Deenoff.
Congratulations on being the lottery and winner of the first commenter this year.
Good evening.
Thank you, good evening, members of the county council, Madam Chairwoman. Happy New Year to everybody, congratulations to the new officers for this year. I look forward to working with you in an open arm of spirit and cooperation, transparency, and utmost putting people above politics. Our 411,000 residents deserve to be up here over elected officials and political appointees or political patronage positions. The rush to punishment by the current county executive who does not, who doesn't agree with his current administration really needs to come to a halt in 2022. The climate of appointments has got to be done a different possible way and has to include input from our residents and not just Mr. Ellman himself. Community involvement, input is what our St. Charles County is all about. Enough of the secret society, the country club entitlement mentality that Mr. Ellman thinks that he's entitled to because he now will be verified and qualified for four different state, different pensions. The selection of John Lyons is all, not just Steve Ellman's county engineer and director of county highways and bridges, which is on your agenda for confirmation. I don't know Mr. Lyons, but it would have been nice if Mr. Ellman would have reached out to community and had community involvement in the interviewing process. I brought forth a trendsetter, someone who is trending our state in terms of transportation, and supposedly Mr. Ellman ho-honed him because it came from Arnie Deenoff, and that's a shame. Now, Mr. Lyons, I'd like to meet with you and get to know you. I'd like to see you do a much better job than Mr. Tarkowski did in terms of being open, transparent, and communicative. I would, I would offer up that you look at opening an open house to meet you and have an open dialogue to get to know you, Mr. Lyons. Dictatorship and control of our county executive needs to come to a halt. In terms of Duckett Creek, on your last agenda, stacking of appointees, putting the director of county finance, who's under the county executive, as the chairman of Duckett Creek, a multi-hundred, a million-dollar entity, political subdivision, is a conflict of interest. Appointing Greg Dorman, the sitting associate county counselor, is a conflict of interest. Appointing John Bamer, the former trustee and assistant director to Mr. Ellman, making $140,000. He is now the county board of equalization, powerful chairman, making a handsome monthly salary. And what about the lobbyists, giving them hundreds of thousands of dollars to Mr. Ellman's friends? Chuck Givens, former speaker of the Missouri House, Tom Dempsey, his wife is a customer service, a communications director, a job at the county, making a big salary?
Thank you, Mr. Deenoff.
And is the assistant recorder of deeds.
Thank you.
We need to start with a good year, and I appreciate it, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. Next speaker?
That's the final speaker.
Final speaker, okay, thank you. Next would be oral report from the county executive, Mr. Ellman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and congratulations. I will be brief, but I do want you to know that probably for the last month now, a big portion of our time has been dealing with the whole situation with the, with the virus and COVID. And the bad news, of course, is that it's increasing everywhere. The good news, if you want to consider it good news, is that it's not increasing as much in our county as it is in St. Louis County. And while, you know, the first year, we know that we had about the same percentage of people infected. Right now, we're about 200 per 100,000 less than St. Louis County. But I'm not going to wood when I say that because it seems to be closing in a little bit, and I'm hopeful that we will continue to have a smaller percentage. But we're back to where we were a year ago, and that is, you know, the, the number of cases are one thing. But what's really important and what we spend most of our time looking at is the hospitalizations and, of course, the deaths. And, of course, the really good news is the deaths do not seem to be anywhere like they were a year ago. The hospitalizations, if you remember, the first year, we were 23% fewer hospitalizations than in St. Louis County. We don't know exactly how many are hospitalized in St. Louis County, so I can't give you that number. But I do know that we have over 20% of the overall population of the region and 14% of the people who are hospitalized in the region are from our county. So again, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's bad news and it's good news. So I hope that we will continue to do better. It's even a little better for the children, those under 20. Again, we have about 20% of the population of the region under 20, but we only have 11% of the, of that age group that's hospitalized here. So I hope in two weeks I can tell you that, that we've either gotten better or haven't gotten any worse. But that's, that's kind of where we are now, and if you all have any questions or want further briefing on, you know, the numbers and what we're doing, what we're not doing, I'd be glad to meet with you individually, but thank you, Madam Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for the county? Could I just ask you how the injured deputy is doing who was involved in a serious situation last week?
Actually, Joey and I were talking about that about an hour ago, and I think.
I think most people are, yeah, the sheriff is here. Oh, hi, Sheriff, how are you? How's, how's our deputy doing?
He's doing okay. Pretty significant injuries to his pelvis and the broken ankle. He's got some other internal injuries, they weren't able to do surgery on his pelvis, there was some internal bleeding. There was a fear of infection, so they're, they're going to wait till that stabilizes. So he's, he's got a long, difficult recovery process ahead of him. Probably won't be back to work for at least a year.
Oh, goodness.
But could have been a lot worse. Couple inches either direction, would have, you know, could have been paralyzed or killed, so it's as good as can be expected.
Right. I'm sure you'll convey to him all of our prayers and good wishes to him and his family for speedy recovery.
I will, thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Sheriff, was, was it caught on, on, on camera, the incident?
I, I was just told this evening that it was on a security video, or video camera. It didn't, it wasn't caught on the, on the body cameras.
The body camera, okay.
You know, the one disadvantage to the body cameras is it's, you know, it's primarily, it's fixed to your chest. So your head might have been turned, and you may have saw it, but the camera's facing forward, so it didn't capture it.
It was a horrific crime.
Terrible. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Ellman? Okay, all right, thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, all of the consent agenda items have been passed. Next is bills for final passage. First is Bill 5029. Would you read the bill for us, please?
Bill number 5029, an ordinance amending section 160.090 ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri regarding court costs.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Bill number 5029, an ordinance amending section 160.090 ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri regarding court costs. Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Bill passes. Next bill is 5031.
Bill number 5031, an ordinance providing for the reauthorization of the transportation sales tax to be placed on the April 5th, 2022 ballot for a vote of the people.
Any comments or questions about that?
I have a comment. I talked, Mr. Greifey's called me today, and we had a conversation, and I know what, the question was is that if this goes on the August ballot or the November ballot, it's not going to, from what I understand, it's not going to cost $150,000 to the taxpayer, so, and I, from what I understand, there's no reason or urgency to push it forward to April's ballot. So I would think that we would push it into August or November ballot, unless I'm missing something, because it won't cost $150,000. And if there's no urgency, then why wouldn't we do it that way? That was, that's my point. I told him that on the phone, but, and I, I told him I wasn't going to be in favor of it, but we, I had no conversation with nobody else, so.
Mr. Cronin?
I sent out a chain of emails back and forth. I spoke with John, I guess, about a week ago or so on that, and spoke with Steve today, especially in my district with Highway 61 and, and 70 interchange and improvements there. This transportation improvement tax is like vital to my district in western St. Charles County. Therefore, you know, I, I want to see that it gets to the voters in plenty of time, simply because the fact that if it would not get voted, approved in April, we would have another chance to put it on the ballot possibly in November. If we missed those two opportunities, then we go all the way into 2024 before it hits on the ballot, and that would throw a wrench in our transportation plans and a lot of the improvements that are planned that are, that would be hard to, hard to, to undo. We'd have some serious problems with funding, and we miss out on a lot of matching dollars from MoDOT and the, and the other transportation entities that we use to, to, to keep our roads in tip-top shape. So based on all that, I'm good with putting it on April. I don't like spending the money like anybody else, but I think the negatives of, of not getting this in and approved as soon as possible, I think those negatives are a lot worse than spending a little extra money for the election.
Yes, Mr. Elam?
I agree with Mr. Cronin, and I would also say that the last time that this was up for vote, it got approved, I believe 77% approved this. And it's a tool that has really paid for itself over and over again for allowing us to be able to go out and make deals with MoDOT to do cost sharing on road projects that we would not have been able to get done if it wasn't for this. Everybody has always been very supportive of this. I can't imagine another issue that we've put on the ballot in recent years that got 77% of support here. And continually, it helps us build new roads, like the expansion with Page, wouldn't have happened without something like this. Mr. Cronin's point, and the western end of our county really is the biggest winner with this, that you see a lot of new roads that have been built here. So I'm in favor of putting it on the ballot and letting the voters voice their opinion.
Any other comments from council members?
I have a comment. I want to just be clear here, I'm not saying that I'm not for this, I'm not saying it's not good for the county. What I'm saying is putting it on the April ballot is going to cost us $150,000, when it costs us in November. The money doesn't get, we don't get any kind of money to 2022 anyway, so the point of putting it on April is because there's less voters and it's more manipulative process to try to get people to pass something because it's a low voter turnout. So by putting it in November, you'd have the electorate having a fair opportunity to make a decision on whether or not they want it or not. So there's 77%, may or may not come true in November, but it's not going to cost us $150,000. That's my point. I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I'm just saying that that's my point. So do what you want.
Okay. If there's no further comment, then call the roll, please.
I have one of the last comments. One of the discussions I had with Kurt Bar today, I thought was interesting, if citizens of this county take the time to read the excellent piece that Mary Inger, I see here in the audience, put together on the transportation sales tax and what it's done for our county. I can't imagine anybody in this county voting against that if they read that piece closely. So I would ask people that are in the audience in there watching this, read that piece, or you can find it online and read it, and see all the stuff that, good things have happened with this transportation tax through the years. And I know a lot of the city governments feel the same way about it, they're, they're already talking about helping us to support this, so let's hope this goes through and we can keep St. Charles County roads, you know, being progressive and moving forward to the next, next traffic crisis we might have.
Anything else? Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Bill number 5031, an ordinance providing for the reauthorization of the transportation sales tax to be placed on the April 5th, 2022 ballot for a vote of the people. Councilman Brazel?
No.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Bill number 5031 passes. Bill number 5032.
Bill number 5032, an ordinance amending chapter 375 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri by enacting section 375.930 vehicle tampering as a punishable offense.
If there are no comments or questions, please call the roll.
Bill number 5032, an ordinance amending chapter 375 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri by enacting section 375.930 vehicle tampering as a punishable offense. Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Bill number 5032 passes. Or was that five? Yeah. Bill number 5033.
Bill number 5033, an ordinance amending chapter 375 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri by enacting section 375.935 vehicle prowling as a punishable offense.
Any comments or questions?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, as our county grows, its population also, crime is going to grow also, and I commend those who brought this forward, the previous bill and this bill. We need to do everything we possibly can to keep our, our county safe and secure, and I applaud bringing this forward. And also, I would plead with our citizens for them to also do everything they can to keep our, our county safe and secure. So just by locking your car, making sure you don't leave anything in your car, and creating neighborhood watches, do everything we possibly can to make St. Charles the great county that it was and will, always will be.
Very important. Thank you. If there are no other comments, please call the roll.
Bill number 5033, an ordinance amending chapter 375 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri by enacting section 375.935 vehicle prowling as a punishable offense. County, Missouri by enacting Section 375.935 vehicle prowling as a punishable offense. Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum?
Yes.
Bill number 5033 passes. Bill number 5034.
Bill number 5034, an ordinance amending Chapter 620 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri by enacting Section 620.040 scrap metal dealers pertaining to electronic database requirements, and by enacting Section 620.050 salvage sale or salvage pool relating to records requirements.
Any questions or comments? Would you please call the roll?
Bill number 5034, an ordinance amending Chapter 620 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri by enacting Section 620.040 scrap metal dealers pertaining to electronic database requirements, and by enacting Section 620.050 salvage sale or salvage pool relating to records requirements. Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes. That's the final bill for passage this evening. Next are bills for introduction, starting with Bill number 5036.
Bill number 5036, requested by Bob Schner and Kurt Bar, sponsored by Mike Ehlum. An ordinance authorizing execution of documents for receipt of funds in the amount of $56,228 from the Secretary of State for a grant awarded to the Election Authority for an election efficiency grant to assist with election activities, systems and equipment maintenance, maintaining voter lists and polling place accessibility, and further amending ordinance 21-096 by providing supplemental appropriations to the Election Authority fund budget.
I noticed we have Kurt Bar here this evening. Mr. Bar, would you like to come up and give us a little bit more information about this bill?
So the efficiency grant is an annual grant the Secretary of State gives out to election officials. It's based on a per capita type of a formula, so for the last several years, we've received around $55,000. This recent year, I spent most of that money on postage for voter registration cleanup. So any voter who, I find out that they've moved, I send them a letter and say, hey, by the way, you've moved, can you tell me where you live, so that we can get the correct address and the voter registration? That process, aside from taking a lot of staff time, takes a lot of postage, and so I spend a lot of this money on postage.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Kurt? Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions or comments about the bill? Hearing now, we'll move on to Bill number 5037.
Bill number 5037, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Mike Ehlum. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a professional service agreement between St. Charles County, Missouri and the United States Attorney's Office for the Eastern District of Missouri in conjunction with the Missouri Highway Patrol as fiscal agent and Mozen Pasha as an independent contractor.
Mr. Cronin, did you have a question about this earlier about?
Mr. Brazel?
Mr. Brazel, okay.
Can I just ask Kim, another ranger, thank you.
Okay. So you've received the information?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, does anyone have any comments about this particular bill, 5037? Okay, then moving on to Bill number 5038.
Bill number 5038, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Mike Ehlum. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a professional service agreement between St. Charles County, Missouri and the United States Attorney's Office for the Eastern District of Missouri in conjunction with the Missouri Highway Patrol as fiscal agent and Nino Perzul as independent contractor.
Any comments about that? Okay, Bill number 5039.
Bill number 5039, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Mike Ehlum. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a professional service agreement between St. Charles County, Missouri and the United States Attorney's Office for the Eastern District of Missouri in conjunction with the Missouri Highway Patrol as fiscal agent and Samantha Wright as an independent contractor.
And finally, Bill number 5040.
Bill number 5040, requested by Chief Kirk Friss, sponsored by Mike Ehlum. An ordinance authorizing execution of the St. Charles County Critical Incidents Response Team Memorandum of Understanding.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Okay, those are the bills then for introduction. Those bills will be voted on at the next council meeting, which is, I believe, January 24?
31st.
31st, okay. Oh, we have five, yeah, okay. Five Mondays. Is there any action on any of the table bills? No? Any announcements or other matters of public interest? Yes?
I was just going to ask the chief. Chief, can you give us a brief one on the plane crash? We had a plane crash on Saturday in defiance.
You're getting all the action out in your area, aren't you?
I tell you, we were out looking for it. A lot of people were going in the backfields because the police don't know about all the farms, and we were in our truck with our spotlights, and there were a lot of ATVs and stuff out looking. It took a long time to find it.
Did you find the crash site?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was actually more information coming into social media than 911 on where the crash site was, but with that, the NTSB is going to have a press conference at our police department tomorrow and give their initial, there won't be a lot of information. NTSB doesn't work fast, but, you know, we secured the site once it was located. There's not a lot of debris. I looked at the aerial photos from the debris field. The aircraft came in pretty straight. There was only a few trees clipped, so it was a pretty steep entry, and there wasn't a lot of, there's a lot of debris, but not much in large pieces or anything, so it literally disintegrated on impact, so.
Two fatalities.
Yeah, there was two fatalities, a male and a female. They were a charter organization based out of Ohio. They took off from Spirit. What we know is, they've been identified, and next to Ken has been notified. Those identities be released tomorrow. They're Ohio residents, they're not local, but they're medical supply charter airline, so they were flying out to Colorado, actually just to reposition the airplane, and then going to fly back commercially, so that's what they were doing. So just tragic accident appears.
Know about, what I've read about it, there's a lot of stuff on FlightAware about it, and, you know, former, I used to have a plane myself. That had to be a catastrophic equipment failure. They were at 8,000 feet on instrument flight, which would mean they were relying on their instruments, and then for them to come down like that, something major went wrong on that plane.
Yeah, as we understand it, there was one May Day call, the Spirit Tower, which they acknowledged, and then there was no transmissions beyond that.
Yeah, it's unfortunate.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, while you're up here, do you have any information about the fires at the harbor?
No, I don't have any follow-up on that at all as far as the cause. I don't, I don't think they were suspecting arson. I don't know what caused it, but our detectives, we're still working with the fire investigators, so.
All right, very good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Any good news?
I've got some good news. Easy meeting.
No kidding? I'm just counting on all the 23 other meetings this year to be just as fast. I know there's some people want to get home and watch some, I think, football game or something like that. Mr. Cronin?
I got one thing to say, this kind of echoes what Steve's got. I've been worried since COVID came along when I'm out in Wentzville, and it's a younger crowd in Wentzville in my district, and you go to, I'm out there a lot because I've got two kids and a mom in Wentzville, and you go to the restaurants, you see a bunch of young people, and they're really acting like there's, you know, COVID's not existent. But I looked at the Health Department figures that just came out today, and there's not been a single person under 30 die in our county of COVID, and I thought that was pretty remarkable, and those young people's antibodies must be pretty good out in Wentzville, or they're taking better care of themselves than they look like when they're in the restaurants. So I was real pleased to hear that, though, so I think that's kind of, says a lot about what efforts the county residents are doing, that you don't have a single person under 30 that passed away in our county from COVID.
One thing I'll remind you guys, in 2019, there were 38 million flu cases, so let's not forget, let's not lose track of what's really going on, so. You've got the flu and cold season, and anytime you get something sick, you've got the variant, so I mean, you've got to take that into consideration, too. And plus, more people are getting COVID because they're getting a vaccination, and that's a fact, so, you know.
Mr. Ehlum?
I would just welcome John Lyons.
Yes.
Congratulations. Good luck, the highway guys are always popular around winter season, so you will be the amazing person one day and the horrible person the next, but we're happy to have you, and welcome aboard.
And we'll all put your number on speed dial. Okay, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Okay, we're all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you. Well, that was a piece of cake.